This meeting will please come to order. This is the OJ Roberts Board of School Directors' Regular Business Meeting, being held on April 29th at 7:03 or a couple minutes later. Please rise for the pledge allegiance and presentation of colors by Navy Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps, followed by moment of silence. Present the colors.
Color guard, freeze and colors.
Pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join us in a moment of silence as we reflect on those serving in the United States Armed Forces, both past and present, the elected leaders for the state of Pennsylvania, and the elected leaders of our nation. We have much to be thankful for in our community. Color guard, present the colors.
Color guard, Gary, colors. Very good. Color guard, forward, march. Color guard, about, face. Color guard, forward, march.
Please be seated. Hi, we have sent the item three, our executive session announcement. The Board of School Directors met on the following dates in the executive session to discuss items in one or more of the following areas, personnel, legal matters, or real estate. We met this evening, April 29th, prior to this meeting. The Personnel Committee held an executive session on April 23rd. Item number four, superintendent's report, Dr. Lloyd.
Thank you, Madam President. We will start with our Student Government Executive Council President, Ahmed Eadwee.
Thank you. All right, starting off the high school, the annual Spring World Concert will take place on May 16th at 7:00 PM and will include performances by the Nationals, freshman choir, and a concert builder. The Wildcat ambassadors visited eighth grade English classes on April 9th to discuss the transition to high school and to answer any student questions. Members of the Gay Straight Alliance attended the Rainbow Connect Conference at Westchester University on April 11th. Over 200 students in the tri-county area were attendance. Students in the high school participated in the Day of Silence to support members of the LGBTQ community who feel silenced daily through fear of harassment or bullying. DECA will be competing at the DECA's International Career Development Conference in Orlando from April 27th to May 1st. Thirteen student government officers created and presented a lesson to eighth graders about the dangers of vaping. The honors advanced film production class, in conjunction with the Video Production Club, will be hosting the 15th Annual OJ Roberts High School Student Film Festival on Wednesday, May 15th at 7:00 PM in the High School Auditorium. The annual high school art show will be held Wednesday, May 1st, from 7 to 9. On April 24th, students and staff donated 103 units of blood at the Miller Keystone Blood Drive. Student volunteers helped by checking in donors, running errands, and manning canteen. As for the middle school, our theater department delighted audiences with the middle school musical, Mary Poppins, in early April. Three teams from the middle school will be traveling to Michigan to participate in Odyssey the Mine Worlds Conference. We are excited to welcome our sixth grade students to middle school and for their annual visit and orientation on May 13th. On to East Coventry, East Coventry recently held it to become a Wildcat night for next year's kindergarten families. The parents participated in an information session while the soon-to-be kindergarten students spent time in the classrooms. The art show, in conjunction with the PTA Ice Cream Social, will be held on May 3rd from 6 to 8:00 PM. For North Coventry, two groups of our young scientists represented our school at the Chester County Science Fair last month. Also, our Wildcats Running Club provided students with a fun way to learn about the sport of running. As a culminating event, participants are invited to participate in a 5K run/walk on April 30th at 3:30 PM at the North Coventry campus. Moving on to French Creek, French Creek will be celebrating our special event on May 2nd. Students will travel to Coastal High School's campus to compete with children from other schools throughout Chester County. French Creek will be honoring cafeteria workers on May 3rd with Lunch Lady here today. The annual French Creek Talent Show will be on May 3rd at 7:00 PM. The fine arts tonight will be on May 8th, with the art show beginning at 6:00 PM, followed by the spring concert at 7:00 PM. The French Creek Fun Fair will be held on May 17th from 6 to 9:00 PM. For West Vinson, the final All-Pro Dad Breakfast of the school year was held on March 28th, 2019. This was the last APD session for Mike and Cheryl Frederick, who have been the main drivers of this national program for the past 10 years. On March 29th, the PTA hosted its first Daddy Daughter Dance Night. Nearly 300 dads, grandfathers, and girls attended the event. On April 16th, the students enjoyed a PTA-sponsored assembly with singer-songwriter, Stephen Courtney. Mr. Courtney's third visit included music and humor, and stories about tons of social behaviors, compassion, respect, and responsibility. And finally, East Vinson, fourth grade ecologists welcomed the Street Water Works watersheder in East Vinson. Teachers, students, and parent volunteers facilitated interactive stations about watersheds and participated in real-world activities that his work collaborated with arrested with Doug Freeman in oil spill. East Vinson welcomed hundreds of grandparents for the annual Grandpa's Dad Dance Celebration. Grandpa's wrote poetry, shared memorable life moments, played to hood games, learned new math games, and even did some dancing for a grand break. That concludes my report. Thank you, Dr. Lloyd.
Thank you, Ahmed. Did you have a good time at the prom?
I had a very good time.
You looked like you were enjoying yourself. This evening, we would like to recognize a couple of community members. So, Mr. Smith, you're going to talk about this recognition. And at this time, I would like to invite Mike and Cheryl Frederick and their family to come join Mr. Smith at the podium. School board members, when I was invited to West Vinson last month, very early in the morning, I was in awe of what I observed, and it is a credit to Mike and Cheryl Frederick. So, Mr. Smith, tell us about this amazing couple in our community.
First off, they absolutely love the attention, so... First off, my name is Smith, Principal of West Vinson Elementary School. It's my honor to kind of bring the school board into what I've known for the past seven years and ask what the teachers have brought to our community. First and foremost, for those who don't know, All-Pro Dad is started by Mr. Martin Morrell. This is under the Family First Organization, and in conjunction with several coaches and players and former players, all pro dads came to be. If you didn't know, Mr. Frederick over here, he's a player in the NFL. He's not as big as he used to be, I guess, but he can. While serving the community, I've had the pleasure of getting to know what the Frederick stands for. They have four children within the district, three right now currently. Galaney, first off, Madison graduated last year as a James Madison University. Galaney is in 11th. Sadie is in 8th. Bodie is in 6th, hoping to get to 7th, but we still have time on that. The Frederick family exemplify the fundamental principles of All-Pro Dad. And I know that this will embarrass them, but first and foremost, love, strong belief in higher power, leadership, dedication, and teamwork. These are all attributes that are consistently demonstrated, not just at West Vinson, but throughout OJR community. As a result of their efforts, our program at West Vinson has grown from 75 to 100 participants, completing one of the highest nationally programs attended. We have had our last one, well over 200 dads and their family and their children. Just, I could probably go on, but I'll just end in the book. Mr. Morrell writes, and I've talked about this before, he says, "We all believe in legacy, and what will your legacy be?" And for my benefit, for both Mike and Sherry, for their efforts, the number-one legacy will be the continuation of the All-Pro Dad program at West Vinson. But more importantly, the impact that both Sherry and Mike and their family have had on hundreds of dads and hundreds of students that attended West Vinson, as well as throughout our community. So, please join me in thanking both Mike and Sherry and their family. Sherry, you wanted to go ahead and do your tweets now, or?
Thank you so much. The board is just pleased to be able to honor both of you and your family for your contribution to the West Vinson community. Next up, we will begin our staff recognitions, and we have many staff recognitions this evening. First up is our Director of Technology, Paul San Francisco, and he is going to tell you about a standout individual in his department.
Thank you, Dr. Lloyd. Kathy Reynolds is our database coordinator here at OJ Roberts.
I'm sorry, Kathy Reynolds, you have to come up front. You don't get to sit over there in the seat.
Great. Kathy is also the president of EPA, which is the Data Network in Pennsylvania. She has been president, vice president of that committee, and has worked with many districts across the state, from Staples in Pennsylvania, to data and information, and districts across the country actually call Kathy for information about how to handle data. She does an awesome job with our hip reporting and everything else in this district. Hasbro gave Kathy at the Hasbro Conference, David Olivet, National Chapter Leadership Award for her recognition and outstanding service through OJ Roberts School District for data, but also not just here, but through the state of Pennsylvania and the nation for all the work she's done. Her presidency, actually, actually being past president now, working with our organization in June, but it's a great award and a great offer for the district and for Kathy. Congratulations, Kathy.
The board takes great pride in the fact that many of our administrators serve at the state level in the past vote organization. And that's a high compliment for Kathy to receive that award. Next up is Dr. Soder, and she has some recognition for the high school world language department.
Good evening. On behalf of the Board of School Directors, we're going to take a moment this evening to congratulate the high school and middle school world language department on their recent award, the Golden Globe Award. We're actually going to spend a little bit of time on this next week when we have our main curriculum meeting, talk a little bit about the details about this award. But this involves an 11-point rubric, an extensive audit, and this is a very prestigious award that our department can't call before every other year. And we are very pleased that since 2013, they have done that. So, I am going to read directly from that organization. "This award represents the highest level of program development that supports standards-based world language instruction as determined by criteria developed by the Pennsylvania State Modern Language Association. Golden Globe schools provide extended, well-articulated programs led by highly qualified teachers who provide performance-based activities and assessments, which enables students to attain and exceed world language standards." Congratulations. Accepting this award tonight is our world language department chair, Ms. Adrian Andres.
Quite an accomplishment. Next, we have the Citadel Heart of Learning nominees. Teachers across our community are nominated for this award by the community. And so, first, I would like to invite Mr. Todd Oswald to recognize the teachers from East Coventry.
Thank you, Dr. Lloyd. Good evening, school board members. Displayed behind me are all of the nominees from the East Coventry staff. And many of our staff members are here this evening, and many of them will be receiving, all of them will be receiving certificates. So, we'll go right across, I'll do quick introductions. Ms. Kearney, Mrs. Bokelik, Mrs. Ponto, Mrs. Hartenstein, and it's Mrs. Hartenstein's birthday today, I believe. Mrs. Paul, Mrs. Fandrin, Mrs. Caesar, Mrs. Nestle, and last but not least, Ms. Rita Bond. So, these are the nominees for the Citadel Heart of Learning in addition to the names that are displayed behind me. So, congratulations, East Coventry Citadel Heart Learning nominees. And with that, we'll turn the microphone right over to Ms. Seeley for East Vinson.
Thank you, Mr. Oswald. Thank you, board, for having us. And East Vinson, to introduce you to some of our teachers who are here for the Citadel Heart of Learning Award, we have Mrs. Amanda de Pasqua, we had Mrs. Danielle Rapp, we have Mrs. Anne Marie Barla, Mrs. Aileen LaFountain, and Mr. Chris Palochek, formerly known as Mr. Pete. Thank you. Next, I would like to introduce Dr. Melinda Miffler from French Creek.
Good evening. On behalf of the OJ Roberts Board of Directors, I would like to recognize the following French Creek teachers. Mrs. Smith Borowski, Mrs. Justin Stone, Mrs. Gallo, Mrs. Jastrow, Mrs. Kirby, Mrs. Yarba, Mrs. Smith, Mrs. Salzer, Mrs. March, Mrs. Walz, Mrs. Glenn, Mr. LaBarra, and Mrs. Chappell. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Brad Beckett, our Northern Coventry president.
Good evening, school board of directors. Dr. Susan Lloyd, it's my pleasure to introduce North Coventry Citadel Heart of Learning Award recipient nominees. So, we have here with us this evening Lisa Neeler, Kelly Bean, Kelly Beaver, Elizabeth Carr, Catherine Clark, Suzie Pittler, Elizabeth Cohen, Kristen Culfer, Joyce DeVal, Shelley Flit. We have Brett Galambis, Susan Grasshoff, Patty Janda, Caitlin Moriarty, Emily O'Connell. We have Lauren Pringle, who will be honored this evening. She is retiring, special honor this evening. Where's Lauren? Is she here? I know she's here. There she is. Right in front of me. We have Diane Robb, Patrice Ritchie, Heather Reynolds, Lori Schaub, Lucy Razini, Kristin Schwank, Ashley Serge, Tom Sidenberg, and Elizabeth Zierin. So, congratulations to them all, and they represent North Coventry.
Okay, now, North Coventry teachers, you're not leaving. You don't get to leave like everybody else. You have to sort of go around the perimeter of the room, okay, so that we can recognize Mrs. Pringle later in the program, so that all of you can embarrass her. So...
On behalf of West Vinson, this is Julie Feldman, Melinda Herzog, and we're going to go ahead tonight and claim a former West Vinson teacher who is now in East Vinson, Michelle Riggs. Congratulations.
Right, that is not a sign, Mrs. Riggs, that you're transferred or anything. Take a tap, Mike. All right, Mr. Stolzfus, you're up.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to recognize all of the teachers from the middle school that were nominated. They're displayed behind you on the screen. And thank those who were able to make it this evening for the recognition. I'll start at the far end with Mr. Mike Uhas, Mrs. Marcy Stancenmarsh, Dr. Evan Houck, and this is Beth Chevill Fuller. Congratulations to all of these teachers. I'll hand it over to Mr. Ken Nipaver for the high school.
Good evening. On behalf of the board, I'd like to recognize our high school. Carol Aberson, Austin Benner, Catherine Booth, Luke Hardy, William Crawl, Joe Faust, Don Columbus, Joe Gallagher, Lindsey Halehat, Amy Hoffman, Ryan Howard, Shana Jones, Brooke Kelly, Rich Colka, Heather Martin, Mary Powers, Stephen Ron, Aaron Sanchez, Marissa Stolzfus, Karen Susan Dale, Kelly Tru, Emma Walker, Andrew Wright, Amanda Yoder, and Shannon Zapp. So, once again, on behalf of the school board, the high school, thank you.
Good evening. On behalf of the school board, I would like to recognize the following students for their participation in the Kellyville Valley Science Fair. From French Creek Elementary, Ryan Decker. From the middle school, honorable mention, Sachi Chakrabarti. From the middle school, first place, Brooke Canham. From the middle school, honorable mention, Zach Rittman. From the high school, third place, Paige Aldrich. From the high school, special award for the Society of Women Engineers, the US Navy Marine Corps Award, Annie Ardidi. We're very proud of our scientists. Thank you so much. I'm sorry, I would also like to thank all of the sponsors in each of the building, all the coordinators for working with our students.
Students are going to meet you back there for their certificates. All right, we're back to Mr. Nipaver. He's going to recognize the NJROTC.
Thank you so much. First off, I'm going to personally say, these fine young ladies and gentlemen did an outstanding job. I remember we were part of, actually, Dr. Lloyd and I, part of the... Inspection, thank you, thank you, the inspection and the amazing job these students did. It was incredible. So, first of all, I want to thank you personally for your amazing job. I'd also like to recognize each one of you for your hard work and dedication. That sounds like giving the certificates, like, "You have to go back in there." Here they are. Thank you, Eric. We have a flag. That was a familiar face. Eric, first off, thank you so much for everything you do. I do really appreciate it. Vay, Englulie. Oh, yes. I should have read some more. And Allison Scotty. Thank you so much. Once again, for these fine young ladies and gentlemen, please, thank you. Sorry, oh, hold on. Got it? They definitely rang. When they asked for the mic, they rang.
We have worked hard to reach our goals each year. For four years in a row, the junior ROTC has gotten a unit achievement award. This year, they were selected as the most improved out of 64 schools and within packages we sent down to those over for competition worldwide. That's 583 schools that we've been competing against. Every year, we look and we say, "We want to go for distinguished." Well, this year, we lied past it, and we went to distinguish with honors.
So, you're just telling them now that they got distinguished honors? Surprise! Turn around and show the board what that looks like, okay? Well done. Thank you so much. We're so proud of you. At this part of the program, we can do whatever we want. But I'm looking for Mrs. Seeley. Where is she right now?
Right here.
So, Mrs. Seeley, Dr. Rarkini's recommendation is that, before we move on to the next part of the program, that we would acknowledge the Citadel Heart of Learning Award winner for North Coventry, since we do know that... I'm sorry, not North Coventry, sorry. That's Freudian. For East Vinson, for East Vinson, sorry. That we announced that. We have not had the big to-do yet, but we do know who the OJ winner is. So, would you like to come up and recognize your teacher for that?
Thank you, Dr. Lloyd. I am very proud to share Mrs. Amanda de Pasqua. She is the OJ Roberts School District nominee for the Citadel Heart of Learning Award from East Vinson. And we are very proud of Amanda. While Amanda received many nominations, it was the quality of the nominations why she was chosen for our representative for the district. So, congratulations, Amanda. We are very excited that you're representing our district.
You're in charge of maintaining the children in the hallway. All right. Now, we're on to Odyssey the Mine. So, who's got the first team?
Thank you, Dr. Lloyd. Thank you for welcoming me back up to the microphone. And school board members and community members, as you know, OJ Roberts has a long standing history of Odyssey the Mine teams. And we'll be welcoming Mrs. Vay, who is a sports staff member at East Coventry, and she is currently fielding three of our teams. So, Mrs. Vay, we'll let you introduce the students who are here as part of the East Coventry Grade Four and Five Team. Mrs. Vay, if you'd like to share with the audience and the board the students' names.
Sorry, here, Aubrey Alcantara, Aubrey Dedana, Joel Rod, Helen Holston, and Sidney Wagner.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Vay. And this team went on to compete not only at the regionals, but then also on to the states as well, and did very well at states. Congratulations, students. So, and with that, we'll turn it right back over to Ms. Seeley for the East Vinson team. Ms. Seeley.
Thank you, Mr. Oswald. Proud to present the East Vinson Odyssey the Mine team. They have competed at the regionals, the state, and they are going on to Odyssey the Mine Worlds. The end of May, so we are very excited. Our coach is Mr. Pete. Mr. Pete, if you can, introduce all of our students.
Victoria.
That's Victoria Nguyen.
Mackenzie.
Mackenzie who?
Key.
Yes, four of the best-looking people you'll ever see.
Next is Dr. Valen Kowalski.
Good evening again. On behalf of our board of school directors, I would like to introduce you to our French Creek Odyssey of the Mine team with Mrs. Pam Yarborough as our advisor. We are extremely proud of our students. They went to two regionals and qualified there, went on to states. They too will be traveling to Michigan for the world competition. I'd like to introduce, see, we have Cooper Brahm, Henry Hain Tobias, Lana Neal, Amelia Vales, and Iris Herlock. Oh, I'm sorry. I misspoke. This is Anthony Matlock. Congratulations. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Ben from North Coventry.
On behalf of the school board of directors for ONJ Roberts, I'm here to introduce our NCOM team, and I'm going to hand it off to Coach Janda. This team took third in the states. Coach Janda.
These kids did amazing things with the art inventions of Leonardo da Vinci. It was really something to see. We have Joey Gannick, Olivia Christicopoulos, Cora Fazila, Sophia Metz, Sidney Voder, Lacy Bolanino, and Alex Sharp.
Next up, we have Mr. Smith from West Vincent.
My pleasure. Go ahead and introduce Mrs. Duffy. Mrs. Duffy, for the last couple of years, has worked both middle school and the West Vincent team, and she's done a tremendous job. And this is the first time that our team will be representative of world. But I want to go ahead and let her take over and introduce all of our students.
Thank you. We're so proud of our students. We have three missing. We have Ava missing, and who else? Ben. And Max, right. But with us tonight, we have Addie Neely, Will Peterson, Tyler Rock, and Nick Payne.
Well, thank one else note is, Mr. Smith avoids trying to pronounce my name like that close. Many a times, he's been publicly humiliated trying to do so. We'll have to make some room up here, Dr. Lloyd. We have three middle school teams, all three of which are moving on to the world competition in Michigan. Extremely proud. I see Mrs. Duffy is up here. Did Mrs. Yarborough escape us, or is she still in the room somewhere? And Mr. P, is he out there? Somewhere there out in the hall? Okay, that means you're going to do your team first, and then if they're not back in by then, I'll take their teams, okay?
One side view, I have Troy Matthews and my husband, John Michael Duffy, who helped coach these teams along the way. So be sure we give them a round of applause as well. Okay, tonight, I have Tommy Foster, Megan Buda Booty. Hope, raise your hand, that'll help. Brayden Matthews, Olivia Savatska, Erin Tokay, and Josh Zen.
And I'll take care of, not seeing Mrs. Yarborough, Mr. Palochek back in the room yet. I'll take care of their teams. Again, just raise your hands, folks. From Mr. P's team, Christian Carroll, Kaia D'Angelo, Tristan Dietrich, Rachel Epps, Aman Puthkamari, Aman's here, Kayla Shay, and Anna Wilson. And for Mrs. Yarborough's team, and before I wrap this up, I need to publicly also thank all of these coaches. If you've been around long enough, you know what kind of time they put into this undertaking here, and that includes weekends and many late evenings. So thank you publicly to Duffy, all the coaches as well, for everything you do for our students. And for Mrs. Yarborough's team, Alec Bitler, Sarah Cass, Grace Dale, Seamus Frye, Anya Groth, Sophia Lineman, and Julia Robinson. Congratulations, middle school. I'll turn it over to Mr. Nipaver.
On behalf of the high school, may I turn it over to Rose to announce her team, her student, her high school.
Hi, everybody. I'd like to announce my high school team. Three members who cannot be here would be Seth Bradley, Hannah Q, and oh, Hillary O'Donnell. But attending tonight is, should we start down here? Mary Kate Duffy, John Patrick Duffy, Anna Suebit, and Jessica Tane. These students worked really hard with everything else they have gone on in this school. Very proud of their accomplishment.
I also want to say they've been doing an amazing job and working hard these tireless weekends and after school. So again, students are amazing. Seeing all the kids from the elementary and the middle school that are coming up in the next couple of years, it's going to be exciting times for Odyssey of the Mine. Would you value it or do?
We seem to be missing Mr. P. And so these two gentlemen are from Mr. P's team. So you want to introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Charlie Cullen. Coming up.
How did your team do this year?
We did pretty good. We got to the state finals, and we got fourth.
Great job. Oh, look, we found Mr. P. We were afraid that you'd fallen and couldn't get back up.
This is Charlie Cullen, and not Puthkamari. This is the worst. Hi, yes, there is. We got Dan Duffy that's not here. There's a couple in Disney, Dan Duffy, Annie Ardidi, and you told me Nick Wood. Okay, and then we had Emily Blaser, and whom I forget. Casey Fitch. Yes, we do have some. They're busy and smart. There must be a nice number there.
Congratulations, gentlemen. I'm so glad we found you. All right, Dr. Rarkini, where are we on the program? That's it? All right. I got to get to North Coventry. They're waiting in the back there. All right. School board, I'm going to add to my report tonight 12.3. Since we have the teacher here and we have her colleagues here, let's do this part of our agenda now. So this is the part where the board would approve and accept retirement resolutions. But before the board approves it, I think that they should hear what they're getting themselves into. So, Mrs. Pringle, come on up. I have waited a long time. If you think you're getting out of this without being embarrassed, I know you're going to cry. Sorry. We're not a bunch of sissy girls at North Coventry, so just suck it up. All right, so here's what the board's going to vote on tonight. ONJ Roberts School District Resolution in Honor of the Retirement of Lauren Pringle. Whereas Lauren Pringle, as an employee of the ONJ Roberts School District for the past 29 years, has made a significant contribution to the students and the district. Whereas Miss Pringle has given unselfishly of her time, talents, and energies in serving the youth of our community by performing her job to the best of her ability. And whereas Miss Pringle has made a great impact upon the ONJ Roberts School District now and in the future. Whereas, Miss Pringle, retirement is richly deserved and recognized as one of high honor and distinction. Therefore, be it resolved that the ONJ Roberts School Board of School Directors, the Administration, and fellow employees of the ONJ Roberts School District express deep appreciation to Lauren Pringle for 29 years of loyal service, and wish Miss Pringle good health and continued success in future endeavors. Be it further resolved, the third day of June is officially declared Lauren Pringle Day in the ONJ Roberts School District, adopted by the Board of School Directors of the ONJ Roberts School District on the 29th day of April 2009. Signed, Mrs. Lisa Huzzard, School Board President, and me. All right. That was so much fun. So now we are on to 4.6 of the agenda, Superintendent's Report. So, great news. PSSA testing will wrap up this week. Keystone testing is scheduled for May 13th and 14th. Our spring art show and choral band and orchestra concert season has begun, so please visit the district webpage for additional information. The high school junior, senior prom and post-prom was held this past weekend, and thank you to the many, many volunteers, including staff, parents, and community members who volunteered their time at this great event. This concludes my report.
Thank you very much. That was a lot.
It was a lot.
A lot of good stuff, no? All right, granted Agenda Item 5, public comment on Agenda Items. Information, proposals, and statements from individuals, delegates pertaining to items on the agenda. Speakers are to indicate their name, township residence, and the items on the agenda to which your comments are addressed. Speakers will be limited to no more than three minutes. Please understand, this is not a time for deliberation with the board, rather the board will listen to all the comments and consider them in future deliberations. Do I have anybody with any comments on our Agenda Items? And if so, be sure you sign a book.
Meeting board members, Dr. Lloyd, Ms. Carmine, staff and residents, meeting is called Lou, and a resident of the Coventry Township. I'm here regarding the Building and Grounds Committee report that I heard about the committee of the whole meeting on April 15. Ever tuning the April committee of the whole meeting, and listening to some discussion regarding the paw print project, I heard the following. Paw prints will be painted by students, and the paint will be a donation by a respective board member, and will be reimbursed. That is correct. That is not a donation. I checked minutes from the Building and Grounds Committee held on February 4th, 2019 on the district website. It was no mention of this project. It was discussed at the county meeting on April 15, and I'm assuming it's being presented tonight and voted on by the board tonight. At least that's what was said of me. For this project to begin now sends a message of cronyism and buying seat on the school board member for the donor. He was aboard looping this project so quickly through, while the delay of start time has taken so long to become a topic of discussion. It is apparent that the appearance of the school supersedes the academic success of our students. Thank you for your time.
My name is Lisa Diel from Morewood Township. I'm no longer sure when public gets that many input into decisions this district makes.
Excuse me just a minute. What Agenda Item?
The Agenda Items, I'm beginning to have. Committee meetings used to be working meetings, in which the public was permitted to ask questions and provide insight into the decisions being discussed. However, over the course of the past few months, the board has not allowed for any public input in any meetings other than these business meetings. So I would like to comment on Agenda Item 6.1, which is committee of the whole, 13.9 textbooks, and 13.17, which is the budget presentation. So from the committee of the whole meeting, there was an ID presentation. And I'm curious as to how many students are in the two-year program? What's the end goal of the two-year program? Is it a certificate? Is it a diploma? What type of credit can the students expect for college? Is it the same or similar to M.C.? Have these students... What was the student's experience with the college application process? Did they find it that it takes to be part of the program? And they... I mean, these were questions that we were not allowed to ask. There were a couple of textbooks on there for approval. My question is, and I understand I heard this asked, since all high school students are now required to carry a Chromebook or a laptop, why are you still buying physical books for the high school? Why are they not all being digital content? It would seem to me as a public member that it would make sense that when you have to replace these, you replace them with digital content instead of replacing them with physical books now. Only have to replace them with digital content now. From Canvas Chromebook presentation, out of the 90 repairs that had to be made, how many were covered under warranty? If they weren't covered under warranty, what was the cost to repair them? If 1,250 Chromebooks were handed out, and there's a $25 per-device fee at high school, that's $31,250,000. Is $25 the correct cost for this technology fee? Should it be more or less? Could you be using that money to aid in buying the digital content if it's more than you need for the repairs? If so, much can be done now over Canvas and Chromebooks. Have you looked at doing virtual snow days? Has there been any talk of not having to lose the day and having students be able to access their content from their Chromebooks? The summer facilities make those projects. You've been talking about the stadium project, and what the logo is going to look at. Was there ever any consideration to use the students that are part of the high school graphics design program, including the design work? The capital budget important case, there is a $90,000 allocation for band uniforms. Is that really the best use of... Is that really the best use of the capital money? Wouldn't it be better to use that money towards academics? Perhaps that money could be used towards your digital textbooks. What about leaving the $25 technology fee? Mr. Gray also mentioned in his budget presentation that he was able to move $5,000 from one item to another because it had been overfunded. How many other places in this district could you save money by looking at what's being overfunded and not just continue to do what has always been done?
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, going on to our Board Committee reports. The Committee of the Whole. We had a meeting on April 15th at 6:00 PM at the East Vincent Elementary School. The following committees met at this time. Buildings and Grounds, Curriculum, Extracurricular, Finance, and Personnel. The board has provided a copy of the meeting minutes. Agenda 6.2, Buildings and Grounds Committee. Mrs. Booth?
Good evening. We had so many wonderful recommendations of faculty and students. I almost forgot what I was going to say. However, the Buildings and Grounds Committee met April 15th, 2019 during the Committee of the Whole in East Vincent Elementary School Media Center. Items discussed, the Wildcat Paw Student Project and the summer facilities maintenance projects presented by Mr. Michael Shelburne, Assistant Facilities Director. The committee emu'd the Paw Print Project to go forward and was appreciative of the facilities maintenance proposed Summer 2019 Agenda. Buildings and Grounds update. Subsequent to the April 2nd, 2019 Board Feasibility Workshop, which was held in Administration Board Room, the Feasible Study Steering Committee met Wednesday, April 24th, 2019, for a full review presentation by Laura Dmaine. With the exception of the Security Audit Final Report, which is not yet received in full, the feasibility study draft was presented and discussed. As a note, all available accrued supporting data, the community survey, community forum, meeting dates, agencies, presented drawings, and priority discussions have been uploaded into the Board Docs Library located in the singular folder titled "2018 Feasibility Study." Information has been continually shared publicly on the district website since November 2018 and continuing to the present. The letters on the front entrance can be the East Coventry Elementary School are installed. Playground installation is not finalized as a backup. The existing playground at the old facility is presently in use. Two firms are in location, one regarding the playground installation and two regarding bio-basin remediations. Punch list items remain. District summer projects are in organizational stages. East Coventry, O N J Roberts District Auction is scheduled for June 15th, 2019. All appropriate and all available advertisement opportunities will be taken advantage of. Come one, come all, you never know what you can find at these auctions. We did very well after the auction for East Vincent. A Buildings and Grounds organized tour of the district warehouse and includes workshop property is in the planning stage. In addition, could we add the Peter property to that tour? Please check your board mail for the Doodle Pool Attendance Availability Survey. P S, all board members are invited to join in. The next Buildings and Grounds meeting will be held May 6th, 2019, 7:00 PM, immediately following the Committee of the Whole in East Coventry Elementary School Cafeteria. Tonight's voting agenda includes a single Buildings and Grounds item, 13.20 under new business, deep consolidation regarding the East Vincent land swap to facilitate new construction. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mrs. Booth. Mr. Minor, Chester County Intermediate Union update, please.
Thank you very much. Much of the activity at Chester County Intermediate Union last month has been involved with the selection of the new superintendent. We've been attending many, many, many meetings, setting that up and following the search process. I'm going to be involved in the round two and three selection process and interviews, and the hope is that a final candidate is going to be selected and approved before the month of May is out. So we'll have some sense of who's going to be taking over for Dr. O'Brien when he finally retires. I was not able to attend the last actual board meeting due to necessary interstate travel for business and also college visits with my two high school daughters. But I look forward to the board the summary of the last meeting for everybody to review.
Thank you.
That concludes my report, thank you.
Okay, for the Curriculum and Instruction Committee, Mrs. Booth, you're gonna give the report for, Mrs. Booth?
Yes, thank you. I am standing today. The Curriculum and Instruction Committee met as part of the Committee of the Whole meeting on April 15th at East Vincent Elementary School. There are three items on the agenda and a highlight for East Vincent. Students from East Vincent shared their TED Talks about various current issues, and their teachers discussed the use of Google Classroom. There were three science texts presented, and the books will be on tonight's agenda. Anyone wishing to review these texts can visit the Administration Building. Mr. Richardson and Mrs. Brilla discussed the International Baccalaureate Career Program, and students who are taking classes in the program shared their experiences. The students discussed their portfolios and research projects. Mr. San Francisco, Mr. Sisito, Mr. Howard, Mrs. Cousins, and several students shared information about their use of Canvas and Chromebooks at the high school. The students talked about using the Chromebooks in and outside of the school. Mrs. Cousins spoke about a parent's perspective regarding the ease of use for submitting work and utilizing the class calendar. Mr. Howard highlighted areas of new instruction that are possible since students can now submit work online and collaborate outside of class. As a result, he is able to use his instructional time in a different manner. The next Curriculum and Instruction Committee meeting is scheduled as part of the Committee of the Whole meeting, Monday, May 6th, at 6:00 at the East Coventry Elementary School. I have a little addendum. That meeting will discuss, the items for that agenda will be, an East Coventry High World Language update, a C P Review update, Leadership Cohort update, Science Revision update. And additionally, I would like to announce the following. There are three standalone Curriculum Committee meetings scheduled. Tuesday, May 28th at 6:00, September 23rd at 6:00 PM, and October 28th at 6:00 PM. Mr. Minor, would you please elaborate? Because you were going to be facilitator for the May 28th standalone meeting.
Sure, thank you. Following some comments from parents who felt that they didn't have a full understanding of the changes in the science curriculum and scheduling in the middle school, several board members and the administration realized that there was probably a better opportunity for us to better educate the community. So at the request of several board members, we have asked for a standalone curriculum meeting that will serve as essentially a workshop sort of meeting where we get some additional information, get questions answered, and hopefully address some of the concerns that may be out there. Largely for my part is just to have a better sense of how these decisions are made and what the evidence is behind them and what the intent is. So on the 28th, we are going to be encouraging that the community and parents that have any questions come. There's going to be, and I know some of this is tentative right now, but we expect that we're gonna have a guest speaker from Schools to Watch, State Director of Schools to Watch Bruce Bosberg, who's going to talk about some best practices in schools and sort of explain what the de-leveling means in educational circles with some questions, some answer. Corbin Stoltz-Fuss will also be explaining how some of the decisions were made with some question and answer opportunities. And we're gonna be forwarding some questions that have been brought to us by the public and also some board members themselves have so that they can incorporate into the presentation and help streamline the process. So we're really encouraging anybody that does have some questions to just bring it to our attention, email the board, email the administration, and we'll roll them into those questions. But this, I think, is a great opportunity for the board, the administration, and the public to interact in a way where everybody comes out knowing what's going on, which is something a concern that's been expressed on occasion.
Thank you. I would just like to add, the September 28th curriculum meeting, the topic will be GPA calculations, and there will be facilitators to be determined. And the October 28th topic are AP Capstone and block scheduling. Facilitators to be determined. And again, we will be having educational specialists discussing these opportunities. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Whitlock, the Extracurricular Interscholastic Committee.
We had a really full report earlier in the spring probably, extracurricular activities. So we are bypassing that and we'll edit it all out in the end of May.
Thank you. Finance Committee, Mr. Hughes?
Thank you, Mrs. Hutter. We need out on the agenda title is the final proposed budget for next year. Final budget will be presented and voted on in June. Just as a reminder, the finance committee has met four times in the last several months. January 14th, March 11th, April 8th, April 15th, through review of different parts of the budget. Each time, the open meeting was asked for any questions from anyone in the audience. Believe we received much feedback, but it was open and transparent. And those meetings, again, were this spring, and the final budget is voted on tonight. Final proposed, and the final budget in June.
And those recordings are all on the website for all of the presentation presentations?
Each, and everyone if you'd like to listen, yes.
Okay, Mr. Minor, the Legislative and Policy Committee, please.
Sorry, that's a lot of me in that. Our last Legislative and Policy meeting continued on the trend of reviewing on the three-year cycle any policies and regulations that have not been reviewed. There have been some recommendations for changes based on actual practice within the district where the policies were out of line or the language no longer matched the current language. We have several items that are coming up for first reading tonight, and obviously the items that came up for second reading last time around. No major changes to this are largely procedural. And there's one policy that's been presented for removal because it no longer follows the practice of the school on that. Also, anybody that is interested in attending these meetings, we always open Legislative and Policy to the public for questions and also input because our policies and regulations directly reflect how the district interacts with the public and the way the public feedback on that.
Thank you. We're on schedule and have policies reviewed that have any impact to the student handbooks, so we'll be all up to date on the for next school year, correct?
Yes. When you change a policy, it can have unintended consequences as all of the student handbooks have to reflect that as well. We had a couple of hiccups on that this year where things hadn't quite got down. A large delay was due to the timing of how things were printed and posted. But we're expecting to have all of that handled in advance in the next school year, so we should be good.
Perfect, thank you. Mr. Fitzgerald, Personnel Committee, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Personnel Committee has met three times in executive session. The plans will be Suntry Act on Personnel Matters. That was October 1st, April 23rd, and April 29th. We've also met once on April 15th as part of the Cal. On tonight's agenda, I'll draw everyone's attention to Item 12.7, Approval Request of Sabbatical Leave. And we'll note that there is one correction to the classification of the individual. This is Lynn Appolito. She should be listed as an A T P teacher and not a library media specialist. Also on tonight's agenda, under Item 13.19 is the approval of the Superintendent Assistant Superintendent Ruberts, along with the software that was presented at the April 15th Cal for the evaluation. Moving forward, Personnel Committee continues to work on the renewal of the district's Act 93 of Confidential Secretary Agreements. We do that work underneath Confidential Executive Session. And also, we're now, with the approval tonight, hopefully with that Item 13.19, will be moving forward with the process of starting the annual Superintendent Assistant Superintendent Reviews. Future meetings of Personnel Committee will come up as needed. This completes my report.
Thank you very much. Ms. Profit, People's Services and Special Education, please.
Thank you, Madam President. On April 11th, we held our first Subcommittee meeting for the Sleep Health Task Force. The Subcommittee's goal was to evaluate a flexible schedule for the middle school and high school. We broke up into separate groups to discuss what this would look like and any challenges we might face. A large part of the discussion was hybrid courses and an added eighth period so that students could decide between coming to Period 1 through 7 or 2 through 8. I'm really pleased to share that we had a few students in attendance. The feedback they shared was that this gave them the opportunity to take more classes instead of utilizing the later start time they would offer. This was only a small portion of our student population, but it was interesting to hear their thoughts. Some challenges the flexible schedule faced was with transportation and that this may not benefit our special needs students. Dr. Martini shared at the end of this session that the staff and tenants would work on a proposal from the discussions we had. Our next session will be this Thursday, May 2nd, at 7:00. This is a very important session, and I highly encourage attendance. This is the Subcommittee that will discuss later start times and what this might look like. I also highly encourage you that if you are attending these meetings and you have not attended before, to please read through the material that's on the Sleep Health part of the website. I did want to clarify a few things for the board about this process as there seems to be a lot of miscommunication out there. As we've discussed before, this is the first year that the school board has taken on this initiative, and it needs to be explored in its entirety. There was previous work done, but all options were not evaluated and discussed. Simply voting yes for a later start time without doing the research behind the changes is irresponsible, in my personal opinion. The purpose of everything People's Services has been doing with Sleep Health is to research everything to make sure we are doing the right thing for our students. There has been no money spent on this task force, and the reason the district has not brought in a speaker is because there is no money allocated towards one. The district believes in all just science and does not disagree with it. Another key point, the task force did rule out two options. We will not be looking at switching elementary and high school start times, and we will not do concurrent busing, which is where that $4 million budget increase came from that seems to be continually thrown out. Again, I highly encourage everyone to attend on the second. If you have an opinion about our district having a later start time, attending this meeting is the best way to voice your opinion. I do want to comment on the staffing recommendations for the 19-20 school year. People's Services had met with high school guidance team earlier this year to review the guidance department's work for college and career preparations for our students. It's very apparent that we need another guidance counselor to help support our growing student population. It's recommended that a guidance counselor does not have more than 250 students to support, and our guidance counselor has had much more. Very happy to see that there is an additional guidance counselor being added to the 19-20 school year.
Thank you. Mrs. Curry, the Technology and Communication Committee, please.
We have not met since the last time we gave a report, but Mr. Fitzgerald and I have discussed setting a date for the future meeting.
Okay, thank you. On to Agenda Item 7, Recommended Routine Matters. The board will make a motion to approve the following routine matters, which are Items 7.2 through 7.11 as action consent items. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? We have Mrs. Booth and Mr. Fitzgerald. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Agenda Item 8, Approval of Routine Matters. Consent Items 8.2 to 8.5. The board will make a motion to approve the following routine matters, which are Items 8.2 to 8.5 as action consent items. Do I have a motion? Mr. Minor, do I have a second? Mrs. Whitlock, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Agenda Item 9, Board Communication.
Good evening, Madam President. I have two board communications, which I was copied on since the last board meeting. There was an email sent on April 12 by Ms. Nicole Moreno in support of Chastel Longworth as the new school cheer pitch for next year. And there was also a letter received on April 9th from Alyssia Sathias in support of Chastel Longworth as the new school cheer pitch for next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda Item 10, Board Discussion.
Good evening. As this has to do with government relations topic, and as Pennsylvania School Board Association's Area 8 Legislative Liaison, I would like to take under discussion, as I had mentioned on March 25th, 2019, sponsorship of a resolution supporting passage of Pennsylvania House Bill Number 526 and Pennsylvania Senate Bill Number 34 addressing the inequities of the cyber charter school funding formulas impacting not only the O N J Roberts School District, but all public school districts in the state of Pennsylvania. I had shared with the board a sample resolution that was passed by Garnet Valley. I had also shared with the board a chart Mrs. Cronraine had provided with district historical cost summary. Do members have additional questions regarding the information forwarded?
I do, Mrs. Booth. Is there... I just think this is a lot for one night tonight. You just sent this to me on Sunday. So this is a lot to absorb in less than 24 hours. Is there a reason why we can't discuss it in the Cal meeting first?
Well, we can discuss it. It's just a resolution, and hopefully things will move through the legislature, so I'm not sure postponing it, but...
But in addition, in essence, the public school districts are charged the same amount, whether a student elects to attend a cyber charter or a brick and mortar charter facility. If the Board is in agreement, and the Board would have to be in agreement, I would like to take it to vote of action this evening under new business if the Board is in agreement. If they wish to wait, that is fine. Mrs. Kromrind, would you care to elaborate any more on the impact with additional information pertinent to this discussion, or do you feel we have information?
I do believe that everybody has the information that you provided, and the significance of this resolution is that the school districts, all public school districts in Pennsylvania, are paying the same tuition rate for regular and for special education. Those are two different rates for charter schools that are cyber charter schools as well as charter schools that are brick and mortar.
Right. We aren't changing any laws. We are just deciding whether we would like to sponsor support of a resolution to kind of encourage the legislature, both the House and the Senate, to look at it more closely. So it's up to the Board. So attend to the Board whether they want to proceed, or whether they want to delay, or whether you would prefer not to discuss it again.
I have a quick question. My understanding, this is not... This applies if alternative options are available. So we are very fortunate that just getting here meeting it as a high-quality and much lower-cost option, and what this would essentially do would be to cap the amount that is paid to a cyber charter school at the level of the high-quality alternative that is available to schools, which would seem to be a more fair option. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Miner, that is absolutely correct. BVA is offered by the IU, as you know, and it is a much more cost-effective online resource for the district versus cyber charter schools.
Okay, thank you. I'm fully in support of this resolution for that reason.
Just to clarify, even though that more affordable option is available, not all of our students that attend cyber charter take advantage of that.
Okay, I don't know if you are interested in voting on this later this evening, or not, or let's put it to a vote. We can either vote yea or nay under new business. Do I have a sense of...
I've read... Well, I've read through the material. I'm in favor of moving forward with it tonight. I have a thought on that.
So we need to add it to the agenda item? Yes, okay.
If this cycle is our improved, and a motion from the floor for approval of this cycle, if there's a second, it will be open for discussion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the consideration. I appreciate it.
Any other discussion?
Are we... Mrs. Kromrind, are we not reading the question about the budget email that was sent in to us? Is that not board communication?
I apologize, Mrs. McCurry. I have... I put together the board communications prior, you know, last week while we were developing the budget.
We only just received that today.
We just received that today.
So that'll be on the next meeting?
Sure.
The other thing, too, is I appreciate the scheduling of the meetings, finally. I would like to note that to discuss a meeting, the reason we are bringing introduction of materials that were just emailed to me last night that I didn't have time to review. So we've had other things out there for over two years, like the GPA discussion. So I would like to impart, say, I'm glad we finally have a meeting on the books, but that's been over two and a half years since we started that process for academics. I think we need to take a look at getting meetings on in a timely fashion for things that are important to our students' success academically.
Mrs. McCurry, that's not accurate. The school board did look at GPA extensively. The information in board docs has been provided to the Board multiple times. The Board decided in the fall not to continue to look at GPA this year because so much time has been given to it last year. We need an opportunity for teachers to be able to participate in the discussion, and so that's why it's going to have to wait until next year. Otherwise, we would have to have that discussion in the summer when the teachers are not available, and they are integral to the part of that discussion that we're having. So that's not accurate, that the Board has not talked about GPA. They have under the prior superintendent.
We said, and I brought the minutes with me tonight, that we would look at it two years ago. I guess the other question I have with the meeting on the delevering, are we going to have public comment before? If we have public that show up, do they get to ask questions during the meeting, or do they have to be submitted ahead of time?
No, the idea of the submissions ahead of time was just to, if there are very similar questions, we could have a part of the presentation and hopefully answer them without repeating it. But then there's going to be question-answer period, two portions of that. So people are encouraged to come and bring their questions. Our hope is the speakers of the administration will actually just answer them directly in their presentations without having to go further. But if there's something that doesn't get answered, people are absolutely welcome to do so.
Dr. Le, just a comment. Can you clarify, we don't want to use the term delevering, correct?
Right, delevering is not an educational term. Tracking, some schools call it tracking, but not delevering is not an educational term. So we will be talking about the tracking of students.
I have to jump in. One of the reasons we have to have this meeting is our staff is using that term, so we have to be careful about what we say is educational, not part of this discussion.
So just so everybody understands, both terms, this is what is being covered on the first standalone curriculum we use. Okay.
May I make one quick comment back to my discussion about this resolution? We have been receiving continual information through PSBA about both of these bills. So even though I sent in yesterday Jackie's little chart for us, we have been receiving continual information on this formula utilized by the state for the charter cyber, especially that's the most impactful and, to me, maybe the lull-hanging fruit that would be very helpful to school districts to eliminate that huge difference. As Mr. Miner mentioned, the availability of around five or six thousand dollar a year full cyber charter locally is comparable to us paying twelve to fourteen thousand dollars to other schools. So that's really the main impetus in this, but we have been receiving continual information on this issue through PSBA and the legislative information weekly. Thank you.
Any further board discussion?
I have one other thing. Mr. Hughes, you mentioned that on April fifteen... No, on April fifteenth, we've had these meetings for discussions with finance, with public comment, but I do not remember... I remember specifically April fifteenth, because that was the COW meeting, that it was specifically stated there was no public comment. I just wanted to clear that up. I think that's a little confusing.
I do believe that this means Mr. Hughes did open it up for any questions on the finance on the budget.
I don't think so, on April fifteenth.
I will go back and print it up if it is recorded, so see if I can figure it out. If not, we'll continue asking in the future.
Okay. Any gold into this? No? Okay, we're going on to Agenda Item Twelve, new business. We're going to pull out... These are supposed to be consent items, twelve point two to twelve point one four. I do have a note on twelve point ten. Mr. Hughes will abstain from voting. Just so we have that. I do need to pull it out at least. Okay, so we're going to be twelve point fifteen. Okay. Any other? Can we please separate the middle school chair? Correct, yes. Twelve attendance is separate. The middle school cheer will be twelve fifteen. Anything else before we focus on this consent item? So the single soccer will be twelve point sixteen. Anything else? Okay, so follow me here. The Board will make a motion to approve the following personnel matters, which are Items twelve point two through twelve point fourteen without... Twelve point ten is being voted separately, and the middle school cheerleading coach is being pulled out, and the high school girls' soccer coach is being pulled out. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Booth, do I have a second? Mr. Hughes, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. So now I have twelve point ten, which is a swim program. Let me just get to that page. This is ratification of individuals to the community swim program. Do I have a motion? And this is... Mr. Hughes is abstaining. Second. And then Mrs. Booth. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Am I any discussion? I'm sorry. Motion passes. So now we're going to do twelve point fifteen. It's the approval of the middle school cheer coach. Do I have a motion?
We'll hold up, please.
Any logic? Okay. All right. Okay, so we have Mrs. Whitlock and Mr. Hughes. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Or I could show Mr. Miner and Ms. Profit, please. Motion passes. Agenda Item twelve point sixteen would be the approval of the high school girls' soccer coach. Do I have a motion? So moved. Mrs. Booth, do I have a second? Mr. Hughes, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So I have Mrs. Whitlock, Mr. Miner, and Mrs. McCurry. Those are the three names. Motion passes. Okay, we're going on to a new business. Thirteen point one, approval of Teacher Appreciation Week Resolution. Whereas America's greatest strength has always been in the educated citizenry, and whereas the educated citizenry is directly attributed to our system of free and universal public education that provides an educational opportunity for all students, and whereas the foundation upon which the system of public schooling rests in the classroom teacher, and whereas the classroom teacher is challenged daily to reach out to every student regardless of ability, interest in learning, social or economic background, physical, mental, or emotional handicap, race, religion, creed, or ethnic origin, to provide the assistance and the guidance necessary for full intellectual development. And whereas the classroom teacher is a key to the intellectual and occupational preparation of individual citizens who collectively determine the quality of life in America and in this community, and whereas the work of the classroom teacher deserves the deepest respect, admiration, and the citizens of this community. Now, therefore, be of resolve that May seventh, two thousand and nineteen, be a claimed teacher appreciation date at the Owen J. Roberts School District for the purpose of providing public recognition and appreciation for the dedication and contribution of the classroom teacher, not only to this community as a whole, but to each of us as individual citizens. Adopted at the meeting of the Board of School Directors of Owen J. Roberts District on the twenty-ninth date of April, two thousand and nineteen. So I have a motion. Mr. Miner and Mrs. Whitlock, any discussion? I just have to say, given all the recognition of those students, this is well deserved. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Agenda Item thirteen point two, this is approval of the policies for second reading. Do I have a motion? Mr. Miner, do I have a second? Mr. Hughes, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thirteen point three, approval to move policies to regulation. Do I have a motion? Mr. Miner, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Booth, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now, this is a very important one. This is thirteen point four, approval to grant formulas to the class of two thousand and nineteen. We have somebody at this table who probably wants to be on this list, right? Do I have a motion? So moved. Do I have a second? I meant you on the third.
Third.
You got it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thirteen point five, approval to establish a student activity. Do I have a motion? So moved. I'll give it to Mrs. Booth. Second? Mr. Miner, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thirteen point six, approval of an agreement regarding waiver of expulsion hearing and stipulations. Do I have a motion? Mr. Fitzgerald, do I have a second? Mrs. Whitlock, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thirteen point seven, approval of out-of-state and overnight student trips. This is what all of the Odyssey Online teams have done a great job this year in our girls' basketball, high school piano, and the world language department. Do I have a motion? Mr. Fitzgerald, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Booth, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thirteen point eight, ratification of homebound instruction. Do I have a motion? So moved. Mrs. Booth, do I have a second? Mrs. Whitlock, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thirteen point nine, approval of textbooks for two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year. Do I have a motion? So moved. Mrs. Booth, do I have a second? Mrs. Whitlock, any discussion? Do we want to just give clarification that's about the hardcover back versus that some of these books are not?
That some of them aren't available, and some of them are more expensive to purchase the online version of them, yes.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thirteen point ten, approval of conference attendance. Do I have a motion? Mr. Miner, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Booth, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thirteen point eleven, approval of staffing recommendations for the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year. Do I have a motion? So moved. Mrs. Booth, do I have a second? Mr. Fitzgerald, any discussion?
The discussion, although then I'm glad to see there's more counseling available this year.
Much needed. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thirteen point one twelve, thirteen point twelve, approval of an agreement between Westchester University and the Owen J. Roberts School District. Do I have a motion? Mr. Fitzgerald, do I have a second? Mr. Hughes, any discussion?
How about we have Westchester here before? Is this an annual approval that we do?
Yes, this is an annual approval. We have other universities as well. They just have to set our Board to approve.
I think we have Westchester here before. I saw it just only new.
New, this is new for their process to have school boards approve.
Okay, good. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thirteen point thirteen, awards of biz- Thirteen point thirteen, awards of biz in accordance with the CCIU Joint Purchasing Agreement. Do I have a motion? Mr. Minor, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Booth, any discussion?
Well again, I would just say I like using the CCIU Joint Purchasing Agreement. It saves us many dollars as we go forward with our budget.
That was already in the transportation budget and in the occupancy budget. Okay. Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thirteen point fourteen, approval of the Chester County Intermediate Unit two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget. Do I have a motion? Mr. Minor? I'm sorry, Mrs. Whitlock, a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to point out that this portion of the IUC budget is one of the smaller portions. They've actually managed to keep it flat for us in one area and slightly decrease it in another. Most of their revenue comes from their marketplace services and even though they've kept it below, at or below the act one increase. So they are, despite being a behemoth, they are trying to keep themselves under control over there to the cost now.
Do we have to do a roll call vote on this one? It says no.
They need to know the vote because there is asked to be a majority of the constituent board and a majority of the proportionate vote assigned to the district. So as long as the minutes reflect the actual vote count, you're fine.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thirteen point fifteen, approval of construction change order for the East Coventry Facilities Improvement Project. Do I have a motion? So moved. Mrs. Booth, do I have a second? Miss Prophet, any discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thirteen point sixteen, approval of resolution of the rest of the notice of the proposed final budget display and advertising. Do I have a motion? So moved. Mrs. Booth, do I have a second? Mrs. Whitlock, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thirteen point seventeen, approval of final budget notice. Do I have a motion? Miss Prophet, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Booth, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thirteen point eighteen, approval of proposed final two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty governmental and proprietary funds budget. Do I have a motion? So moved. Mrs. Booth, do I have a second? Miss Prophet, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm voting no, Mrs. Herman.
Motion passes. Thirteen point nineteen, approval of rubrics for superintendent and assistant superintendent evaluations. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Whitlock, do I have a second? Mr. Fitzgerald, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of deed of consolidation. And this is worth parcel, two parcels that are in the East Vincent Township. Do I have a motion? So moved. Mrs. Booth and Mrs. Whitlock? Do I, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thirteen point two twenty-one, approval of professional services and maintenance agreements. Do I have a motion? So moved. Mrs. Booth, do I have a second? Mr. Hughes, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Yes, at this point, this is the proper time to ask for a motion to approve a resolution in support of the pre-discussed bills, Senate Bill number thirty-four and House Bill number five twenty-six regarding, regarding the charges that we get, I'm sorry, the funding formula that the state uses.
Do I add a motion?
I'll move.
So moved. Mrs. Booth, do I have a second? Mrs. Whitlock, do we need any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, for the reason that I said, I did not have enough time to look at the material.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Agenda item fourteen is our public comment. Information, proposals, and statements and our questions from individuals, delegations pertaining to any item. Speakers are to indicate their name and township or residence. Speakers will be limited to not more than three minutes. Please understand, this is not a time of dialogue with the board. Rather, the board will listen to all comments and consider them in future deliberations.
North of North Coventry? Let's thank you all for voting yes to keep up. Chad Walworth, the high school cheerleading coach. You heard many weeks ago, pleas from students, children, parents as well. And we just love him. And we thank you very much for bringing him here this year. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sarah Evans, I live in North Coventry and I live in kindergarten in French Creek. I just wanted to point out, I'm sure you're all aware of that, the Radnor School District and the Terrific and Easton School District vote voted to change their start times for next year, the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty academic year. This was an article published in The Empire this week. They are changing their, Radnor's changing from seven thirty-five to eight thirty and Terrific is changing from seven twenty to seven fifty. The article said that they actually had wide support, which was nice, from the school officials, parents, and students. And that may or may not have had something to do with the fact that they did have Judith Owens come to Radnor twice to speak on the topic. And of course, they did talk about the challenges that they faced in transportation costs and also some resistance from the teachers. But I guess they felt it was important enough to find a way to do it and make it work. And I just wanted to make note of that. Thank you.
Good evening. Richard Whitlock, South County Township, Austin, Ohio. I would like to thank you for voting on twelve fifteen for the approval of Chad Walworth. But I really believe that the process was flawed. I think that the board's own report made accusations. Cause I had a lengthy conversation with Dr. Lloyd, the son of Chad's experience with Chester Red Knights. And it was borderline, not slander, but on truth. I think there should be an investigation by you, this is someone from your board, school board. And I think they should be censored. And I think we're apprehended for actions. But this won't control the process, I must inform.
Hi, my name is Carrie Lasvanas. I live in East Coventry Township. I wanted to take the opportunity to thank the school board and administration for listening to our concerns regarding the seventh grade honor of science. And I'm just gonna go ahead and refer to it as de-leveling because that's what we've been referring to it up to this point. And putting their plans to de-level this course on hold for the upcoming school year. Also for scheduling an open forum workshop regarding this issue. There do remain some issues that I would like to raise for your consideration though. Number one, while the letter that was sent out to sixth grade parents concerning this issue was appreciated, I feel it is important that an announcement of the plans for the de-leveling and announcement of the standalone workshop meeting be sent out via a district-wide email and posted to the individual school websites. So that those parents with younger elementary-aged children are made aware of these planned changes and given an opportunity to engage in the discussion. And number two, there remain discrepancies in statements that have been made regarding the eighth grade honors classes. While some have indicated there will be no de-leveling of eighth grade due to the important role that the levels play in preparing students for high school courses, others have suggested that there are plans to hold further discussions regarding this possibility during the upcoming professional development sessions. I ask that the administration clearly state their official policy on this matter. Thank you.
I'm from the North Coventry Township. I wanna say thank you for scheduling the AP capstone of discussion. However, we still have to look at log scheduling, the GPA, which I'm agreeing with, cycle designable. Stop putting our kids in jeopardy, put them ahead, they need to go forward. Districts are sitting there laughing, they confront you with locking in. Did you have all this money and you're not moving kids to the future? Please do it. My second thing has to do with the stadium, the track, and the turf. Many of you know that I was tried to work my ass out of it and have to walk. When it rains, it really is bad. So I decided to go to the high school on Saturday morning and was locked out in the track. I confronted Mr. Cuthbert and he said it was open. It was open on Sunday. However, I couldn't walk around the track. There were hurdles, starting blocks, and you're pushing trap, which could break the warranty because the sponge underneath and the base could be damaged. I couldn't walk around the track because the hurdles were there. They weren't put away. I could have walked down to that stadium with about a thousand dollars and scrapped one of them from your blocks, your starting blocks that were left of the stadium. Your track would be damaged because the benches were blown over. Coaches need to be putting their things away or somebody needs to be putting them away because taxpayers now are saying, okay, so the track is gonna be damaged and we're gonna have to pay the money. Is that why your taxes are going down? Thank you.
Okay, agenda item fifteen, board discussion and follow-up. Does anybody have an agenda? Agenda item sixteen, board, sorry? Follow-up?
Yeah, I'd like to, well, I just want to make sure I'm addressing your point. Can we have some clarification on the Wildcat paw prints that are being proposed for going from twenty-three cadence down to the stadium? And who exactly is sponsoring the funding for that?
So, months ago, the Jamie Free's Memorial Fund was established. And the money was earmarked for a school spirit project onto the campus. And so we set out trying to find students that were interested in the project. And so we have identified the students. The money is being paid for out of the Jamie Free's Memorial Fund. That was the purpose of the funding since the beginning of the school year when the times were collected and the intent of the project all along. Just took us a while until we were able to identify the students that were interested in taking on the project and the development of the template. So it's not something that was just created.
So it's been in the works for many months?
And so it was when the project was complete, when we had the students identified and we had the template developed, that it was brought to the board and shared with the board. The board isn't voting on the project. It's a student spirit project and initially the board knows we frequently, you know, bring projects forward that were, where we're planning to alter the campus. So once we had it all together, that's why we presented it last, the last meeting.
And don't we have to have our driveway be cleared before we start putting the paw prints in? So if people wait for the paw prints, they have to know that the driveway has to be fixed first.
I wanna follow up. When I spoke about the GPA earlier and I'm not feeling so well tonight, so I just wanna follow back up on that. I, and I think Mr. Hughes is frustrated with me, but the GPA subject is very complicated. And it was over two years ago that we asked that the school look into this. And while I could sit here doing new business and make a motion to change the unwated rubric to ninety to a hundred, that is an A or it is a four point O. It's much more complicated than that. That is the reason why we asked for, let's say, a task force to look into it. We looked at it on the board and when the board members looked at it, several were new. It has a serious impact on our children when you go to apply for colleges and jobs. While I appreciate getting a date in September twenty-third, I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit kind of like, I don't know what the right word is to understand that we're waiting for the teachers to get together to look at this when it actually impacts the students. And I think that students should be involved in the discussion. And students that have graduated in the past should be brought back to waiting on the subject. Because when we talked about it over two years ago, the students that were here fully understood what is wrong and out of kilter with the rubric. It has not been changed for over fourteen years now. So while we made a Band-Aid approach to the ninety-two to a hundred equals a four point O versus a ninety-seven to a hundred equals a four point O, I do not understand the delay in going back and looking at something that is as important. When we looked at it in March of two thousand and seventeen, I didn't know at the time that Westchester had made a sweeping change to their GPA at the exact same time that we were doing it. So I am happy to send that information in so that everybody can understand what I have been talking about. I just want everybody to understand that I think that the de-leveling conversation we're working that the people asked to hear. But I think it's important that we listen to the people that come in front of us and that we also are transparent in the discussions and the information that is set forth to them.
Just two quick comments. One is Mrs. Booth brought up the tractors, which I think is a good thing to discuss at some point in LOP because we're regulation. The regulation is number seven oh seven B. Mr. Minor, can we take it to your committee for discussion? The track is only open Monday to Friday from seven thirty to ten p.m., which should not have been up on Sunday. It should have been cared for better. So I think it also is a permit. One was held up, I know this because we lived in a month of discussion today. So I think we should follow for that to ensure we're enforcing the current regulations for our district. The other is discussion around topics for public comment. I think we need some clarity around what is on the agenda. It's not the intent for the first public comment or topics we're gonna vote on. The second public comment is for everything else. Whether we shift the order around or not, but we're trying to use committee elements for a wholesale discussion in the beginning of the meeting. It should begin, we should be clear, we just have one. So you guys can discuss the name of the issue, but we'll simply be held up. So we have a clarity.
So, Mr. Hughes, I will bring the policy to the attention of Dr. Cuthbert and make sure that the track is only open at the times that are stated in the policy. Now, that regulation thing, that Mr. Minor has announced May twenty-eighth standalone meeting, we'll be able to publicize that to parents. But first, the school board needed to make the announcement this evening before we could move ahead with that. One other comment, just for the board's information, that out of the twelve school districts in Chester County, four districts have grading scales that are ninety to one hundred. Only four districts have grading scales. Eight of the districts use ninety-two, ninety-three, or ninety-four to one hundred. The districts with higher requirements are Abbott Grove, Great Valley, Kennett, Octorora, Oxford, Unionville, Westchester, and the OJ Roberts School District.
I actually, I have those grading scales memorized, Dr. Lloyd. And Westchester, for example, at ninety-seven to a hundred on their unwated rubric gives students a four point three. So it's not, I, I think that I probably So it's not, I think that I probably was more tuned to that subject because when we did it, my daughter was a senior. But it's not the, to the hundred, it's what it converts to, to the four-point-O policy, which is the question. And it is more complicated with that than that because that's why I have repeatedly asked for it to be looked at. My comment tonight was I have to wait. So we finally get a meeting date, are we going to publicize September twenty-third and the October date as well? Are we going to put those on the calendar?
Well, right now, we're focusing on the May date because that's specific to the middle school and the middle school parents and the parents that are coming up to middle school. And then we will be publicizing the next date. And the October date also includes block scheduling. And we are not having a conversation about GPA without teachers being involved in it. We are in May, we're at the end of the school year. It is not, now is not the time for us to take on a new issue that is not part of the district's goal. We need to stay focused on the district's goal for this year so that we are sure to achieve those goals. And then if the board wants to talk about GPA, then we will include teachers in the discussion because they are essential to this, to this process.
It's not, actually, with all due respect, GPA is a regulation and that can be changed by the administration at any time. So I, I would hope that if we have a conversation, that we can bring students back to, to listen to that. I think it's important that we focus on our high school students and what makes them be successful to get into colleges and jobs.
We'll be happy to include students in the conversation. Our students are having no difficulty getting into top colleges and Ivy League schools. So we will have the conversation in the fall.
Any requests for information?
I do. Could I have, I know I asked before for the number of students that were in the IB program. And we heard about the IB program, and it seems that those students were doing very well. But I would like to know that an item is cost for the program in terms of the, per student that are taking advantage of the program. I also, with regard to what we talked about in the budget, I thought that at some point, we were going to get a breakdown of the technology budget. And I don't know what happened with that. I would like to request that we have a breakdown regarding the Chromebooks and the copiers and the other items that were on there.
Mrs. Carmichael, can you, can you comment on that, that information?
Sure, Mrs. McCreary, when we, when you requested that information, we provided a detailed breakdown in Board Line. I will go back and find that and I'll make sure that you receive that. Well, I know it's confusing because I asked for it and I get it in Board Line. But then I'm a little bit confused about why it's not on the public copy of the budget. Does that make sense when we release it? It is posted. We also provided the details on the budget webpage. So if you go to the budget and finance section of the webpage, we added another slide to provide the detail for the technology budget. And we posted that publicly as well. So we're trying to provide all the information that is being requested regarding the budget. We have no problem sharing that information. Okay, thank you.
And it is out there now.
Yeah, I do have another question regarding the band uniforms. I thought band uniforms were purchased this year. I thought that the process was initiated this year for the band uniforms. No? No, no. I believe that the process will be initiated, and the capital budget is spending over a two-year time period. So the process will be initiated next year. It takes some time for that to occur.
And just a clarification on Mrs. McCreary's request. So you want the IB cost per, you're not including the startup cost, so are you? Because if you do that, then it's, as in any program that you start, your cost per student is going to be heavier because you've got the initial startup cost versus you've got the ongoing cost per student. So if you, if you take a snapshot right now, take all our costs divided by our kids, you're going to have an inflated per cost per student.
We can provide the initial investment and then they go on to the current annual.
And that's going to give you a more accurate picture because in any program that you start, you're going to have your initial startup. You can't load that into the kids, the first round of kids to go through it.
As a board, we did pass, we did approve that cost about two years ago as we moved into the program for coaching our teachers who were eligible to teach. And those costs were approved at that particular time. So I take it, Mrs. McCreary, you're looking for the annual per year cost per student. Is that correct? I am, because it goes in conjunction with my request to have us look at the AP Capstone program because that is a two, that is a two-class program. And I think that that would serve a lot of our students also well with the honor students and others that take the AP programs. And I'd like to get a head start on maybe trying to initiate that program as soon as we possibly could because the AP Capstone program is like the very top of the AP program. So I don't know why we don't have it in our district, but most of the other districts around us have it. So that is why I'm asking for that information.
Okay.
Sorry. One last question.
I wasn't fast enough. Sorry.
Sorry. I've been pondering this one. With respect to approval of a coach or anybody that might come in front of us, if at the last minute or any point during the process, we received information from anyone that there might be something we need to look at, look at further, what do we do?
So if the, when the board receives their agenda, their draft of the agenda, and they see now who is on the agenda for approval, if the board, if a board member or anybody that would see the agenda, even up till Friday, because Friday is when it goes live to the public, if somebody brings a concern to the administration about an individual on the agenda, we then are responsible for removing the person from the agenda and investigating that concern instead of allowing it to go forward to a vote and the person being embarrassed in a public forum.
And that, that processes independent of who brings the information to you? All right, thank you.
So if we see somebody on the agenda and we raise a concern, you automatically will take them off the agenda? Is that right?
Well, it's investigated, correct. Now, if something's already been investigated, then they're not removed from the agenda. So sometimes people raise a concern, and they're not aware of an investigation that's taken place. And so then that's discussed in an executive session. But if there's, there's a concern that we have not investigated, then we remove it and investigate.
So, but this has come up before on the topic of micromanaging administrators. So is that not micromanaging administrators if we bring something up that's on the agenda?
I think that.
That it gets placed on the agenda?
If I may interject, I think a board member has a right to communicate concern to the district administration. If it's a confidential personnel matter, which any of these matters are, that should be discussed in an executive session. If a majority of the board feels that the concern is sufficient enough to remove the item from the agenda, the item should be removed from the agenda pending the district administration's investigation.
And I might even take it a step further from a personnel standpoint. It's, it's been the policy of the school district for a long time, and out of abundance of caution for our kids, that if we think that something needs to be investigated, we'll stop and we'll investigate it and then we'll move forward at a later time with, moving forward with what we're going to if that situation has been cleared up.
And I think we've allowed ourselves enough time now. We're doing the approvals well in advance, so there's no, or precaution, negative precautions to the kids. Anything else?
My request, are we on that now? Are you, were you going to turn?
Yes.
Okay. So I want, I would like more information on the training we provide our coaches. I understand that our coaches are valued in here, but I'd like to understand what we're doing to support our coaches. We really pride ourselves on the mentoring program that we have for our teachers that are new. And I wonder if we are able to do that for our coaches as well.
Yes, I believe that is going to be a topic for Mrs. Whitlock's next committee is the training for all coaches in the preparation that they, they go through. We'll talk about the PIAA training, and then we'll talk about additional training that we provide coaches. Okay.
Going once, going twice, we return.